Call the meeting to order at the record show this is a regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, January 20th. All members of council are present and the press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. If it pleases council, I'd like to amend the agenda and move item number four up to item number one. If that's okay with council, I'll entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, so that was an emotion.
Make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to move item four to become item one and one to follow.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. Do I have a second? Second by Chris Landmark Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, seeing as saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We're gonna do something different this year, I guess make it a little more difficult on myself. Grant, could you come up to the podium? It's very rare that we get to recognize someone for outstanding achievements. I don't know if this is on, is it? Kitty? We get to recognize an individual for outstanding achievements. And this is a proclamation from the city of Tegucigay recognizing Eagle Scout Grant William Hummel. Whereas Grant William Hummel has proven himself to an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America and has achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas it takes years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle Scout rank. And whereas Eagle Scout acts as a leader and role model in the community. And whereas Eagle Scout awards is a distinction that will follow him through his life and he will be a beacon for others of the leadership quality and commitment of this young man has shown. Whereas the citizens of the city of Tegucigay appreciate his hard work to approve the Duke Power Line Trail by waterproofing the bridge and installed in 2014. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the city of Tegucigay do hereby congratulate and recognize Grant W. Hummel for his achievement in the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session to have a discussion of negotiations incident to contractual matters as it relates to Catawba Park engineering and cell tower lease assignment.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, seeing as saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session, probably about 20 minutes. We'll be back.
item 11, executive session, to add a discussion of the cell tower lease agreement to the other two topics that will be part of executive session.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Landmark Larson. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, seeing as saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number two on the agenda is public comments. Sorry, would you do me a favor, please? Would you take that down?
Am I illegally just to sign up?
Yes.
I called off.
Let it go.
And after that, he didn't.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your understanding. Just a few housekeeping rules. It's first of the year, so I'd like to go over some of the rules that we have in regards to public comments. We are going to ask you to keep to a three-minute rule. We have a timer right over there that tells you your time. Council is here to listen to your comments. Council will not be responding to your comments. We will just be listening, taking your comments. If there is something that we want to discuss with you, we will go to the city manager who will have your information and he will give it to us and we will contact you. If you want a council member to respond, please come up and ask one of them to respond to you after the meeting is over. All of council has their email addresses and telephone numbers on the city website. You can contact any one of us at any time. With that being said, before we get into the public comments, I would like to read a statement. Many years ago, most of the small coves that surround the shores of the peninsula of Tegucigay were marked with no-wake buoys that were installed by city staff. Around 2005, SCDNR pulled all the buoys citing state law and declared them to be navigational hazards. At that time, we were instructed that state law mandates no-wake zone within 50 feet of all docks and would supply signs that people could install on their docks. In early November, at the direction of council, the city manager inquired to Senator Wes Hayes' office as to how we could go about having these coves officially declared no-wake zones by SCDNR. The city manager was instructed by Senator Wes Hayes' office to contact the legislative liaison from SCDNR and to pass the legislation on to a gentleman by the name of Donnie Pritchard, who informed us on November 21st that SCDNR has assigned an investigator to us that will conduct a study as for the need for the navigational aids, no-wake buoys, around the Tegucigay coves. Their investigation will be centered on determining the best means possible to ensure boating safety. The study will be performed from May 22nd to September 7th. Once he has finished his investigation, investigator Spires will correspond with the city manager as to his findings and recommendations. The focus of all of this is to ensure boater safety. It is not tried to inhibit folks from enjoying the lake. We just want SCDNR to take a look at things and assist us in making sure that those using the lake for recreational enjoyment are doing it in a safe and responsible manner. Ultimately, city council cannot have no-wake buoys installed. City council cannot determine which areas should have that classification. That responsibility rests solely with SCDNR, which is why we have requested that they take a look at things. Our only intent is the safety of the public. With that being said, I will open it up for public comments. First person on the list is Scott Shirley. Scott, if you would come up, state your name and address and we'll start the clock.
Yes, good evening. My name's Scott Shirley. I live at 248 Shoreline Parkway here in Tegucigay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. As a child of God, a father, a husband, a property owner, a taxpayer, a fellow boating enthusiast, a registered and active voter, and a lover of this beautiful city, I thank you for allowing me an opportunity to share my thoughts and I ask you, as part of we the people, to rescind the no-wake resolution. The current resolution gives too much opportunity for unintended consequences, which none of us really want. Those unintended consequences could be restrictions from the freedoms that we enjoy in this community today. There's no need for new laws today, but there is a need to enforce the existing laws. If the 50-foot barrier around docks and boats at rest and swimmers at rest in the water is not actually a law, I had a very difficult time finding that on the DNR website. However, it did say that careless, reckless, and irresponsible behavior was a violation of the law. If we enforced that law, we'd have what we're looking for and we would also have, in addition to revenue to the city as a result of that, which would be frankly an intended consequence. So I'm asking you to enforce the current laws and to rescind the resolution. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Becky Fox?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Becky Fox and I'm actually speaking on behalf of a...
Would you state your address for me? I'm sorry.
Yes, I live at 371 Camino Railroad, which is in Mooresville, North Carolina. I'm speaking on behalf of a large group of people, so I'm gonna try to stay tight to the three-minute time limit, but understand that I am the show director and representing the Carolina Showski team. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the team because we're asking you to rescind the ordinance that was passed on December 17th. While I understand it was not the intention to restrict all coves, we're very concerned about the interpretation of that and that in the future, if this is passed, perhaps in three years, five years, 10 years, when you are or are not on the council, people could interpret this very differently. A cove is defined as a small outlet and often a circle or oval off of a bigger body of water and this is exactly what we ski in. It's where we practice, where we perform ski shows, the July 4th celebration, for example, and more importantly, as part of our mission, we give back to the community. We're a vital part of this community. We do ski clinics, boat driving clinics, safety clinics, and that's why skiing at Windjammer Park is very important to us. More importantly, through the ski team, we've developed three professional water skiers, seven that have served at regional and national levels, and we have other people and other intended skiers that we know are gonna make a difference in the athletics of show skiing in the future. In all of these learning activities that we do as a ski team, we do it with the opportunity to influence and make an impact on kids and youth. We teach to respect the lake and respect other people of the lake. That's the reason why, you can understand, when this came up, we're very upset because we feel like we're a part of this community and we weren't sought to help, to provide education, to help provide experience. No one contacted us. We didn't know that this was coming about. Just to give you an example, you know, last year in 2014, we worked for four years to develop a $40,000 performance platform.
Yeah.
I live in Lake Norman. I personally was able to get $6,500 donated to that lake, donated to that dock. $5,000 of it came from a person who lives in Texas, doesn't know anything about Tegucigay, doesn't even know where it is, but he knows what we do as a ski team and how we impact the community and our mission to mentor youth and family. So we want to continue doing that. Again, it's part of our foundation as a ski team to contribute and be a mentor and good steward of the lake and a good citizen of the city of Tegucigay. I'm a person who believes everybody should be able to use the lake in a safe manner. Education is of vital importance to our team. We contribute to that. I've been boating safety certified, driver certified, and I actually drafted and published the boating guidelines for emergency nurses that was published in 2006 and distributed to all EDs in the United States. As I mentioned, we do a lot of community service.
Just finish your last sentence if you wouldn't mind.
At the boat show, we are actually sponsoring a booth to educate 15,000 patrons that are coming to the boat show. We ask for you to work with us, to allow you to help, and most importantly, rescind this because the wording is wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to clarify, this is not an ordinance. It's not a law. It's not an ordinance. Rebecca?
I'm sorry? Yeah, sure.
Mark? Fred? Wingate?
Fred Wingate, 1997, Newberry Lane in Tegucigay. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight and for your service to the city. Quickly, just tell you a quick story. My wife and I and my kids live on the small cove of Nivens Creek in Tegucigay and there's often times where we take the boat out and we purchased a new boat, thank goodness, from a really cool guy in this room, Danny Tolentino, who helped provide a little safety and knowledge to me that I didn't know before I got on the water, which was pretty cool. But we purchased that new boat and I say that because we started with an hour meter that was at zero. And by the time about 62 days had passed, or the hour meter was close to zero, we had over 55 hours on that vessel. So we spent a lot of time on the lake and an hour on the lake with the boat running actually feels like about three hours because usually you cut it off and cut it back on. So it doesn't seem like a lot, those hours, but they are. We do our best, my son and I, who are out there most of the time, trying to educate folks that are maybe not sure of the whereabouts of a big rock that sits in the middle of the cove that does have three buoys around it and we see them about to go over it, we try and stop them. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. We also try and coach folks on a yoga paddleboard class that are in the middle of Nivens Creek, laying down at sunset, that hey, there are really fast fishing boats that come through here. You may want to at least stand up on your paddleboard or sit up so people can actually see you and, you know, not run over you. And most of the time, we're met with a lot of aggression. People don't really want to listen to us. Sometimes they're drunk, sometimes they just, you know, don't really feel like listening to somebody else when they're out on the boat, you know, spending time with their family. I don't have a badge. They won't listen to me if I don't have a badge. So my point in all this is I feel like if the laws were communicated more accurately and more frequently to some of these people, all the problems that we're talking about tonight would be minimalized. I'm not for never passing another law, but passing a law when we're not already enforcing other ones seems to me like just a little bit of a violation of common sense. So thanks for hearing my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Justin Landers and I live at 4358 Applegate Road in Charlotte. I'm a member of the water ski club and spend a lot of time on the lake down here. I want the brief comment on your resolution is, I think your wording is just way too vague under the resolution that you sent to the legislature. Too vague, need some more specifics if this is the direction you choose to take, be more specific and hopefully that your DNR study helps to facilitate that. I'd like to take the rest of my time and just say how grateful I am and thankful to this city and the board for hosting our club and I think it's really a unique thing that we do here and we're very, feel very privileged to be able to come down here and ski in the community and the support of the community and the city council and whatnot has given us over the years. Not every town has a show ski group that does a Friday night or weekly ski show. Regarding the safety of the lake, I think we have a real problem with, you know, education on the water. There is no boater or driver license that you have to get to operate a vessel on the lakes. I think we're dealing with a lot of folks that just, you know, just don't necessarily know what the rules of the road are and whatnot. And I think a big thing that would help would be the police presence. We have, we see the York County Sheriff and the state DNR boats. Very rarely see the Tegucigay police boat out there and there's a very nice Tegucigay boat and at one time, I think there were some wave runners that officers would ride on. So, you know, a lot of what the police do on the water for us is, you know, helping people be safe and educating them. I've been stopped before and I've found the officers to be, you know, their first and foremost concern is our safety on the water and whatnot. So if we can get more presence, you know, I think it helps to communicate the laws and the rules of the road that are there and it helps keep us all safe. So if you all have opportunities to shuffle some of the resources perhaps a little bit, maybe that police boat being out on the water a little bit more often would be helpful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Rachel?
Hi, I'm Rachel Norman. I live at 11119 Wingate Court here in Tegucigay.
Excuse me, one second, Charlie.
I just wanted to explain a little bit about who I am and why I feel that being able to ski in the calm water coves is important. I grew up barefoot water skiing and became the 2006 World Barefoot Water Ski Champion.
Woo!
Yes, I ski on my feet, just my feet, my seven-and-a-half size foot at over 40 miles an hour. So it's very important to have calm water when you're barefooting. Any little ripple or wave can cause you to fall and have serious injuries. And the other thing through my barefoot skiing that I acquired discipline on and off the water, it has made me a very committed person and it's also led to opportunities of travel to Australia, Austria, Japan, South Africa, and just many opportunities to be a role model for kids and teaching them. And through this, I've also become an instructor for no-fall barefoot water skiing and with that requires extreme safety precautions with the equipment you use, the water that you're skiing on, and so it's of utmost importance with safety to have a calm cove to barefoot in and to train people and allow them the opportunity to learn how to do a very high-speed and dangerous sport. And so I just want to impress upon you the importance of being able to ski in the coves and allowing future generations to be able to ski in the coves. I now have two kids who I would love to teach and also teach adults and kids as well and allow them the opportunity that I've had throughout my years of being able to barefoot on calm water in the coves and give back to the community and help others in this sport. So thank you so much for your time and hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Kara?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kara Ancevik, 976 Cove Point Lane, Tegucigay. I am a lake resident and I, as well as my family, are members of the Carolina Showski team. And I'm here because I'm concerned about the vague wording of the resolution that's at hand. Laws currently exist for the no-wake zones within 50 feet of the structure of Lake Wiley. What I find is that many people, as has already been expressed, do not know or understand what the rules or the laws are. Instead of taking dramatic action that can have unintended consequences, why don't we gather together and partner and communicate the community, educate the community, and encourage boater safety? You already have great communication tools at hand with your city website, your active use of Facebook, your electronic bulletin board. Utilize these tools, partner with the lake community, and educate the public. For example, the next fishing tournament that's hosted in Tegucigay encourages the organizers to remind the participants about what safety rules are. We could utilize the Marine Commission and ask for assistance in doing so. We can partner with boat vendors. I know there's a boat vendor here that believes in boater safety. And other area marinas to educate their customers about the law. Boater safety laws should be posted at area boat launches. Many times, I've been at a boat launch with brand-new boat owners excited to get in the water and you can very well tell that they have no idea what they're doing. So if they don't know how to manipulate their boat into the water, I'm quite certain they probably don't know what the laws are to keep them safe. And I live on the lake. My kids and my husband and I are on the water constantly. They were in the water yesterday. And rarely see the Tegucigay Patrol presence. We see the DNR, we see the state of South Carolina, but we don't see Tegucigay and I think that just that presence would make a difference. It's kind of like in the early days of Lakeshore when the Tegucigay Police kindly positioned themselves on the side rows to remind us to look at the speed limits, to remind us to sit a little bit longer at those stop signs. I think it would encourage better boater behavior. I'm concerned about the blanket language of this resolution. I'm afraid it will restrict all rights of our citizens and not just Tegucigay residents and I'm so concerned about the lifestyle impact that it could affect families like mine and the passion and enthusiasm that they have for water, boating, skiing, all the things that we do. The reasons why we live on the lake, the reasons why we live in Tegucigay, it's our life, it's our lifestyle, it's what we live for. So I encourage you to really consider us and reconsider the verbiage that you use and education is the key. And I know that you have a large group of people who are willing to support making that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Bob Fairclough?
Charlie, you have to reset it again, it's running.
My name is Bob Fairclough. I live in 7120 Top Sail Circle. You'll have to excuse me, I'm not a public speaker, so...
Neither am I.
That's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
Lake Wiley is a public lake and everyone should be allowed to use it. If Tegucigay seeks to restrict the use of water surrounding it, what allows other communities like River Hills to do the same? And should we ask them to have the same permission? We can use the lake safely and in a courteous manner. It takes education and Tegucigay as a waterfront community needs to and has a civic responsibility to help participate in that education. I've heard that some suggest that the no-wake zone should be put in place because waves from boats damage their docks. To me, this is like moving to an airport and saying that you're complaining about airports or airplanes flying overhead or moving to near a highway and saying that you have too much car noise from the highway. As a homeowner, you have a responsibility to own your own docks management. That means repairing, fixing, and understanding that waves are going to happen. Yes, boats make waves and I'm not suggesting that boaters should not be responsible to obey the laws that already exist, but everybody needs to recognize that the biggest culprit of wave generation is Mother Nature, not boats that use the lake for six months out of the year, if that, during the daytime, predominantly on weekends. Again, Lake Wiley is a public lake for all citizens of South Carolina to use. I ask you to take back the ordinance... That you approve so that everyone can continue to use our lake and I ask that Tegucigay to step up and participate in educating the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Make that a minute and a half.
Russell Frazes, 1992, Newberry Lane, Tegucigay. I've been living on Nivens Creek for 32 years since it was, the Con-Tiki was cut up on the beach. I've been on, I've served four years on the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. So I've been in your chair when people come up and talk about how people are busting up their docks and going through their coves. And I've met all the people from DNR and talked with them over the years and DNR typically will not put no-wake zones for private docks or private property. They do put them in for gas pumps, marinas, and boat landings. One great thing about South Carolina, it is a free waterway advocacy for waterways. This affects not just the water skiers, but it affects everyone and it will... And it will penalize the people that know the laws and follow the laws and are part of the laws on the water, and the few that are making it crazy for everybody out there and unsafe. I've got, I too went on, and I've been looking all over for laws and guidelines. I actually found this from the South Carolina Legislature. And it's got everything on here, from who can arrest somebody on the lake to negligence of operation, and it goes on. There's three pages of BUI, how that is conducted. It talks about who's exempt from wearing flotation. It goes on to how you're not allowed to allow somebody to use your personal watercraft or your boat illegally. And I request that we all work, all the people in this room, can work together to educate everyone that comes through Nivens Creek or anywhere through our, we have three boat ramps, that we educate them on the laws of South Carolina. And some of this, I'm going to repeat, we have so many opportunities here within this city with our websites and signage and posting. We have the police in our boat ramps. I'm asking for a budget increase to put our boat, our boat was, our police boat was on the water three times last year. And with everything we got going on and what's going on in our neighborhood, I think that we need to have a full-time marine staff. I can't even find a picture of our police boat on our website other than at the Lake Wiley Marine Commission website. I know that you guys all understand what we're asking for you, because we went through this four- or five-year permit process for the dock. And this town has done an impossible thing by seeing that water skiing is an important part of this community, and you supported that. But the way that this thing is worded defeats all of that and puts everybody in South Carolina in jeopardy. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
Troy?
Hello, my name is Troy Lovins. I reside at 2161 Wendy Oaks Road, Fort Mill. I bring a little different and more unique perspective to discussion this evening. I live on the lake. I do not live in TK. I live in Torrance Creek, the other side of TK. My issue is, I'm not sure how TK can have a reaching effect and govern my side of the lake. So, my question is, if in fact we would allow this to pass, what impact could that have on property values? Concern I have is if we're going to do a study for wake zone, let's do a study for what impact that might have on lake values. We've all seen lakes that have no-wake zones or no-ski zones. The value of those properties are significantly different than the ones on our lake. So, I'd like the committee to consider either rescinding this or extending it to also study the impact on lake values. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Dave?
Good evening. My name's Dave LaValle. I live at 25035 Timberlake Drive, right here in TK. Let's see. My eleven-year-old daughter and I are avid skiers, and we're both performers with the Carolina Show Ski Team. We use these coves to practice our skiing, and I need it a lot more than most, believe me. By restricting the coves to no-wake, you're restricting the use to one or two groups and not protecting it for all of us. You also then force anyone who wants to create a wake into the main channel, where all the boats are using the water. So, anyone that wants to teach their five-year-old to ski now has to contend with these great big cruisers that are out there, jet skiers, speedboats, all that stuff that's out there. When you force more people into that space, it just becomes, you know, more dangerous, especially for the little ones out there. Our ski team has been using Lake Wiley for many years. We feel we're good stewards of the lake. We're mindful of the residents and teaching our members in the community to be respectful of those boats. We want to be part of the educational process, and we would like the opportunity to help educate those other boaters that are out there on safety, even common courtesy, et cetera. Another point is TK is a very, it's well-known that we're a well-policed community, and by that, people that come in here know not to speed. It would be okay with us if that carried over to the waterways out there. So, what we're asking is that you rescind the resolution, at least as it's worded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Arnold. I know she's doing the PTA meeting. That would be great. And in the meantime, we're going to go over to Jonathan.
Another person on crutches.
My name is Jonathan McDonald. I live at 3081 Riverbend Drive. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the room, to the council members, and to you, Mr. George Shepherd. Sometimes I get very passionate about what I believe in, and you asked me nice, and I should have put that sign down. I think I'd already made my point, so I'll keep that in mind next time. I've lived here since ninety-four. When I got married to my wife, Kim, we moved here. We moved on to 1028 Bounty Lane, which is really the only cove that actually is on the golf course, the old sixteen and seventeen, old sixteen and seventeen golf hole in the cove. A lot of people know me, but if you're not, at seventeen, I actually started water skiing up at Lake Norman. Family got me into sport. By the age of twenty-one, I signed a professional contract, a sign with O'Brien Water Sports and Malibu Boats and numerous other sponsors. I've been a five-time world champion in kneeboarding, three-time Pro Tour champion, which this is all through ninety-one to two thousand. I've been all over the world doing what I enjoy doing. And Russ had just mentioned something was in here. I remember when I first started skiing on Lake Wiley, is one of the first guys I met was Russ, and his oldest child, I think, was about maybe two, and it was on a kneeboard riding. And I'd go by and do a big old trick, and they'd just get a kick out of it. There's a lot of history with, you know, in this city of TK. I've brought a lot of people here, this city, to own the lake in my home and taught them how to ride. A lot of them went on to be great competitors. There's actually been, the first-time tricks have ever been completed is what we refer to as Trick Alley. It's known all over the world in our sport. At the end of Windjammer, past the sandbar, there's been about four or five tricks. That's the first time they've ever been completed on either a kneeboard or a wakeboard. I think you guys, I know you're looking for safety, and I agree with you. When I was at Bounty Lane, I lived in a cove that it didn't need to be. It was a no-wake zone, you know, it wasn't big enough. So, I think, you know, I came up here, wanted to be all gung-ho and everything, but, you know, a lot of people that spoke before me, I think they put it pretty clearly, is if it can be rescinded or delayed, why don't we all work together to where the skiers can enjoy the coves that are capable of handling it, and the ones that people complain about maybe getting in and out of there where they shouldn't? Maybe that is the answer, but to be a blanket issue as far as all coves adjacent, and like one gentleman said, he doesn't even live in TK. There are several coves that, you know, border North Carolina and other areas. So, I think if we just take time, maybe relook at the issue and work together, I'm sure everyone will be happy with this, and we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Carrie's choosing not to speak. Chris? Chris Maywell, I think it is?
May Hall.
May Hall.
I decline.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Terry Alagritza? Could you write any smaller? Robert?
Oh, thank you, Robert.
Yes, Cole Fairclough? Connor? Sonny Heiss?
Y'all will have to forgive me for my voice, because it's almost completely gone. But I think these people have clearly stated everything that I know about the lake, and I've been on the water for sixty years. I look a little younger than that, but I've owned a boat since I was seven years old. I've competitively bass-fished, boat raced, you name it. I've been there, and I've done it. I've been here thirty-three years. I'm the one, I'm the one that called and requested help when the DNR came in and took our no-wake buoys. Not out of the main channel, not out of Nivens Creek, not out of Torrance Creek, but in short, shallow coves where there were kids swimming, where there were kids that were board paddling, where we had, now you've got personal watercraft that runs seventy and eighty miles an hour, and you see three young girls on a boat, on a personal watercraft, that's doing seventy miles an hour and totally out of control. Somebody's going to get hurt big time. I've fished internationally. I qualified for the world championship twice in bass fishing. I've never seen a more rude and crude group of people out of Rock Hill and the surrounding area that belong to bass clubs. And I've written in to all three of the newspapers, the Charlotte Observer, the Herald, as well as the Fort Mill Times, with regards to the lack of control that the presidents of these clubs have with their members. And I served on a team out of Jacksonville, Florida, that went five years undefeated, and we never had not one charge against any of our members. And we were the largest club in the entire United States. So, we do have an issue here on this lake right now, in the smaller coves where these buoys were removed, that they stopped the TK Fire Department from maintenance and then maintaining these buoys when the chains, because we have a very acidic water lake. These chains would rot after a number of years and break away from the concrete blocks that anchored them. And the Fire Department would go out in assistance to the Police Department and repair these chains and replace these buoys.
Sonny, thank you. Thank you.
I've taken up more than my time, but anyway.
And for the record, because Sonny's losing his voice, it's George Heiss at 1156 Molokai Drive. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sonny.
Alan?
I'm Alan Havner from 8043 Windjammer Drive. And I've been skiing on this lake since nineteen seventy-six. My family moved here, and I've lived in TK most of that time. Went away for college and moved back. But I've skied Nivens Cove, Windjammer Cove. I think the issue with the resolution is, is just the wording of putting every cove into the same category, where I agree with Mr. Heiss, is cove is probably an area where you can't ski. You couldn't go through that cove without being fifty feet away from a dock. So, if the laws were enforced, and I don't have a problem with a buoy outside that cove, but we've got to figure out a way to word it better than it has been. And that's the biggest challenge I'm having, is just let's enforce the laws we have and figure out a better way to word and not lump it all into coves adjacent to TK.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wade? Are there any other public comments? There being none, closed public comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the city manager a question or two on the topic at hand?
Sure.
Charlie, just a couple of questions. Number one, if we were interested in relooking at our resolution to either rescind or modify the wording, if we felt that it was written too broad, too vague, wrong, whatever, do we have an option to do that?
Yes, you do.
And the fact that the resolution could be perhaps not artfully worded, will that really have an impact on what DNR's study is and the results thereof?
That's probably a question better suited for the York County delegation. I would think that they would want input from DNR, since DNR does have ultimate jurisdiction over Lake Wiley and the coves that are being mentioned. But I think that's probably a question best asked of them, which I would be more than happy to do so.
Okay. And then finally, you know, a few of the citizens that spoke tonight, and the mayor did clarify that we didn't pass a law. We did not pass an ordinance. We only issued a resolution. But somebody did mention, you know, please do not pass anything as a result of the DNR study. So, if DNR concludes that we do need buoys or that we do need to establish no-wake zones in coves, et cetera, it doesn't seem that anything would be coming back to council for us to pass anything. If I understood it, it would just simply be SCDNR making the determination based on whatever their criteria is and then carrying forward?
The letter that I received from SCDNR, letting us know that they were going to observe and study those coves during, we'll call it the boating season this coming year, is once they concluded that, they would provide me with the data they collected as well as their recommendation. Now, what that means, I don't know it this time, other than they're going to review the coves, and they're going to provide us with information that these coves have, they've got serious issues, or these coves are fine. We observed everybody obeying all the laws. I don't know what the recommendation part of that letter means at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chen, do you have any questions or comments? Ron, Chris? Charlie, I just have two. One, we put a newsletter out. Is it possible that you can get with someone? I heard a lot about education, that people need to be educated as to what's going on. Is it possible that you can get with someone from this room and potentially get them to write something for our newsletter?
Be glad to. We send it out every week. If it pleases council, I'll start with Russ Phrase, and I'm sure he can point me to the right person.
That would be great. The other thing is, I have the opportunity to write in the mayor's corner in my Carolina town every month.
Yes.
Or every two months, I think it comes out. I would like to give up my next issue to write in and have something written from the ski team about boat education.
I will instruct staff accordingly.
Can you, that would be great.
Sure.
Is this enough? Are we commenting? Are we asking now for...
That's what I asked about, if anybody had any comments.
It's a big comment. I mean, we've got a whole room full of people. Are we addressing this issue now?
Do you have any comments to say?
I've got a lot of comments about it.
Then state them.
But we were told not to address this.
No, no, we said not to address it.
I agree with everybody that stood up at that podium tonight, that these, it's very vital that we, you know, we provide education and safety out there. Not, I'm not, in no favor of eliminating any coves to be skied in that are within fifty feet of a dock or whatever. That's how I feel, just so you all know. And as far as rescinding a resolution, and it was worded improperly, I might agree with that, too. And if we do that, then I think maybe DNR will have a different light on this, or maybe even shed no light on it, you know? But I think our primary care up here was to serve you people that live in the city or outside the city with as much education and safety as possible. And I think you've all shown an example of that tonight. Every one of you spoke about that. That's the concern.
Yep.
It was not our intentions to come in here and stop anyone from water skiing, certainly not mine. And now that I have that opportunity to say that in public, that is what I feel, and I agree with every one of you that got up there, including Sonny. You know, even though this is where it all started, that there is a concern for safety, not to stop water skiing. And I'm glad I had, you know, I didn't know we were going to have this opportunity to share that with you, but I'm glad I did, because I don't want to, I've had a boat on the lake, and we did water ski, but we did it in a, and I was also a police officer on the lake as well, and we do have some issues out there. And lastly, I can't emphasize as much that it is a shame that boat is sitting. Our police boat is sitting, and we did have wave runners that were donated by Alpha, I believe Alpha Motorsport, that gave us two wave runners. I was on them for five years out there. And some people mentioned there was a lot of people out there drinking, and they're rude, and they are. They are. You pull them over, it's bad. But nobody on the ski team or anybody that's out there skiing with their families, I don't think that applies to any of you people. Maybe, you know, you do, everyone screws up a little bit. Maybe, you know, you, you do, everyone screws up a little bit, but we do have a concern out there. It happens, but we do have a concern out there where these people come, I, I was doing the police, uh, work for one of your ski shows and a fishing boat with, a guy was drunk with his daughter on the front, went right through the ski show. I took the wave runner and literally bounced him twice and he's going like this yelling at me. I'm going, cut it down, we got, they're on, they're coming, you know, they think the girls were in a, they were all on top of each other. I'm going, oh my god, this guy's gonna, and, and that doesn't show enough alarm or cause for, for safety? Yeah, sure it does. And I was, I was banging into him and he's yelling at me for hitting his boat. And I'm going, look, look, you're gonna hit everybody, you know, and, and there is a concern and there's a big concern out there, but I think we're all on the same page. That's why I'm, I'm glad I had that opportunity. I think that you, you must think we're trying to stop this, uh, skiing and as not, not my intentions at all.
No.
I think safety is our priority here and all of our concern. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad I got to say that as well. And I think, I think we're going to look further into, uh, allocating funds to get more, uh, get our boat out there and get more police officers out there as well. And I thank you for that.
Ask you again, Ron, do you have any comments?
Absolutely, absolutely. There were no wrong statements made in this room tonight and we're all on the same page. And it's only, this only came up in the best interest of safety. Was it worded improperly? Yes, in my opinion now, looking back at it. Was there a lot of time put into, to wording it? And was there support in, in wording it out of the state is how it should probably be stated. Uh, I don't have a problem with the recension, if that's what we so choose the council. I thank council for supporting me to get to this point. And I think it's worked out well to get the crowd to this point. I'm excited to see this amount of people in a council meeting. We don't have that very often.
We're usually lonely.
Yeah, I'm a skier, I'm a skier, I'm a boater. Uh, now there's been things, some personal things said, but I assure you, this is nothing, this has to do with other than safety for everyone in Tugak and only Wiley, period. And Chris, you know, I'm an advocate of the boat, said it, we cut the budget, we didn't. It was cut by four to five hundred dollars. That's the reason it only went out three times. Uh, so I think the presence of it should be there. Thank you.
Jen, again, any comments?
I'm curious how many hours they actually are on the water. I am not on the water, so this is all new news to me. Why do we have a boat if it's not being utilized?
Uh, we've, uh, used to utilize the boat, uh, very heavily during the boating season up until about two thousand eight. Uh, during the economic downturn, uh, we had to shorten up purse strings. Um, and the councils that, that be, uh, determined it was more important to have our patrol officers on the roads. Um, that was about a ninety-plus thousand dollar a year line item, um, in the law enforcement budget. Um, and now we put it out on the major holiday weekends. Uh, it's out all weekend, Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend and Labor Day weekend. Uh, we've been doing that since oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe.
Ron, I know that we had spoken and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the notion of connecting different resources that can patrol the water so that we're about, you know, we're creating more presence on a regular basis, if we even just generate our calendars, you guys have been talking about two different entities you do see. Why don't we not all be on the same weekend? Can we stagger it? Have you made any progress with that?
I mentioned DNR to communicate with our new chief when he was coming in. And, uh, I mentioned it to the sheriff, uh, briefly. They're all open, everybody wants to protect their own turf, but I think they're open at certain holidays. As Charlie mentioned, it needs everybody out there, but there's times that we could work together. Chief, probably in a multi-jurisdiction agreement, that, uh, we take turns to keep the budgets in line.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to give these people some closure on this tonight. I would like to rescind the resolution to, uh, the legislative, uh, party in South Carolina.
I'll second it.
Rescind the resolution that was sent to York County delegation.
I'll second it for discussion.
Mayor, if I can put a pause to this, um, y'all are about to take action on an item that's not on the agenda.
Correct.
Um, at a minimum, at least amend the agenda. Um, if not, let's bring it up at the, at your February meeting.
No, let's do it now.
I'll take back my second.
You need to amend the agenda.
I'll do that now. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda, you're gonna have to tell me what item. I'd like to rescind my motion to rescind the resolution to the York County delegation. I'd like to re, uh, I'd like to amend the agenda from item two A to include the motion, to make a motion to rescind our resolution to the York County delegation.
You okay with that?
Second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right.
Well, Hank, we have to, we, no, first we take, we take a vote on the fact that he's making a motion to amend the agenda.
So he just, he just seconded the discussion. You don't wanna second that to a discussion for the amended agenda.
No, that has to be a separate motion.
Call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now, Chris, item number two A, would you like to make a motion?
I would now like to make a motion.
What?
To rescind the resolution to the York County delegation in regards to the no-wake zone in Tugak.
I have a motion by Chris Landmark Larson, do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Go ahead, Ron.
We gotta vote on it and then have discussion, correct?
No, we have.
Okay, that's right, okay, okay, I'm so confused right now.
If you'd like, we can vote on it now.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I second for discussion for, I, I agree with, with, with Chris's motion here, but I, I think the motion should state, we don't wanna forget where we got to and we got this, all these people here to get, working together tonight, that we wanna change the wording of the, and, uh, do we not?
I don't wanna include the, of York County delegation, I don't wanna, we, we agree, we can do this amongst ourselves. We're, we're all on the same page.
I think, I think everything I heard here, um, is that it's enforcement, um, that the people are asking for and education. If we can do enforcement and we can do education, we've given two avenues where education can be done. Um, so then we're gonna educate the community as to what happened.
The chief of police is here, he knows what we're, what we're up against.
And you know, one of the things that, and, and I don't, Chris and I had a conversation today and I, and I'm, if, if I'm divulging something, I apologize. The, the, the state law says fifty feet. If you're educated as to what the state law says, then why do we have to do anything? Right?
George, George, only, since you said that, do that out. I don't have any disagreement with that except for that whole idea that I brought, came to council and brought this up, was the visibility of a buoy and designated coves, just like a, uh, traffic, uh, bump, bump in the, uh, Harris Theater parking lot. Just you and I riding along, having a beer, not having a beer, whatever, and say, you need to slow down, we're going in a cove. It's just a visual thing. I don't, I think the education, I spoke with Russ about this a couple of days ago, the education, I'm all in favor of that. And the enforcement, I'm all in favor of that, but I still think, uh, that'll be another subject.
Dottie?
I was gonna say something, but I completely left my head at this point.
That's what I was gonna ask. I mean, are we still gonna get buoys to notify people since apparently it's gonna take more than education? We can't expect that every person's gonna show up to these resources. So, like you were saying, if you have a buoy, that would be some sort of caution. I mean, I know through the school system, at least when my child was in eighth grade here at Formal School District, they had a, he became boater certified driver. However, that teacher is no longer at the school and I understand the program's been dropped. So, we can't expect that every resource we put out there will get to every person. So, where we still have this survey, are they still gonna plan on having it and we get the buoys in anyway?
The res, the resolution and the DNR investigation study, whatever you wanna call it, have nothing to do with each other.
So they will not be performing this study then?
No, they have nothing to do with, they will still, unless, y'all want me to call DNR and tell them, I mean, they, they've got jurisdiction, they can do it with or without us.
I can't answer that question, but I would assume at this point the study would go forward.
Right, the study is gonna, study will go forward, but.
But was the, but the study was not planned as a result of our resolution? Or was it? Because if it was.
There's already a study in process. This was to push forward from what I'm told and also that, again, to reiterate what city manager said, the results of the study would come back to the city manager and stats, be presented to council what their findings were.
That's what, that's what the city manager believes, but he's not.
That's what I was told by DNR also.
Do we have a copy of what the resolution says?
Why, we're rescinding it, it's, it's just, vote on that.
Not, not handy on me right now, no.
Okay.
I mean, I think.
And Jen, have you thought about what you wanted to say?
Uh, yeah, two things. One is, um, I'd like to ask the city manager, when he gets a moment, to contact DNR and find out, when their study is done and they bring recommendations or findings to us, are they binding on us? I mean, are they just for us to consider and we either like them, we don't, we keep them, we throw them out? Um, and the other thing where we talk about education and awareness, um, you know, one place that we can think about posting sort of rules of the road, as it were, are at the boat ramps and things like that. So there are many other ways besides the two or three that were mentioned where we can increase awareness and educate at the same time. And then people may not have the opportunity to say, oh, I didn't know about it, you know, because ignorance is not really a good defense.
That's it, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you all for coming.
Before you leave, okay, because we may not see you again.
Please get us coffee.
All right, the gentleman all the way in the back, please put your hand up. That is our new police chief, Steve Parker. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Counsel, before you, are the minutes from regular city council meeting of December fifteenth and special city council meeting of December twenty-third. If there are no objections to those minutes, those minutes stand approved. Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number five on the agenda is the committee appointments. Count.
Mayor, I. Thank you.
Will wait.
Sure.
How would we be notified if this were to be another resolution or if there were to be changes?
We'll communicate out to the ski team through Russ.
All, the ones who signed up on the sheet or is there another?
Yes, we will, we will, do the sheet.
We don't normally do that.
We don't do that. Should just say it'll be on the website.
Now you got nobody to talk to.
It's on the agenda.
Be on the agenda.
The entire packet.
He doesn't live in Tugak, he's Fort Mill.
All he has to do is look at the packet.
There's no reason why we can't communicate to them, whatever the result is. Not one person left in the room. Do I need to go back to, um, the minutes, to approve the minutes?
No.
Item number five on the agenda is the committee appointments. Um, counsel, there are two vacancies on the, um, CRC committee. And if you would pass your ballots, I don't know where mine is, but.
I got yours.
You got mine already?
Yep.
Good deal, I'm glad you're keeping me straight. Um, and based on the fact that, um, there are two members on, two openings, two people on the ballot.
One vacancy, one vacancy, two applications.
What it says in Georgia's not correct.
No, I think there are two vacancies.
Not according to the packet.
Can we hold this vote, because I was gonna question you about that, it says one vacancy, but I'm sure there's two.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, I voted for two.
Packet says there's one vacancy.
Did you vote for two people?
I voted for one.
Says one, one and two, I, I'm not sure at this, at this point, I'm not sure.
Counsel, I've seen a motion to table item number five on the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to table item five on the agenda.
Motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second? By Chris Landmark Larson, any discussion, there being none, call the question. All in favor, single saying aye. Item number six on the agenda is the second reading with ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD, city manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, at your November seventeenth meeting, uh, you have vote, uh, you did approve unanimously to, uh, approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD to allow for a subdivision of a parcel, uh, into two tracks. This is the, uh, large parcel that is, we'll say, west of Wellmore. Um, dividing it into two tracks, um, as they have, basically make it more conducive for the developer to sell. Uh, he actually has a buyer for one of the lots. Um, and as this is a major amendment to the master plan, it has to be done by vote of council. As council's already given favorable first read, we would ask for a favorable second this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD master plan to allow a subdivision of tax map number six four four zero one zero one one two two to be designated as GC one, GC two.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford, any council discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Item number seven A on the agenda is the funding for Kataba Park, city manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as y'all recall, in, uh, twenty thirteen, council did vote to re, um, to transfer funds of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars from our general fund reserves to a Kataba Park Reserve Fund. Um, that account currently has three hundred and twenty-seven thousand and change in it. Uh, as per the Gardendale Development Agreement, uh, the developer does have to deposit with the city two hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, and that park would bring total Kataba, or that funding or deposit would bring our total up to five hundred and seventy-three thousand and change. Um, we also have additional funds available, um, outside of our general fund. Uh, one was a, uh, filu paid by, uh, the Stonecrest Enterprises to the city as well as hospitality tax dollars. Um, and we would request, um, for council's direction to transfer those funds um, into the Kataba Park Reserve Fund necessary for, uh, getting Kataba Park started.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to designate filu paid, filu, alua? Okay, paid by Stonecrest Enterprise to be designated for Kataba Park and four hundred thousand dollars of H taxed money. Also to be designated for Kataba Park and authorized staff to transfer both amounts to the Kataba Park Fund.
Motion by Chris Landmark Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hershey, any council discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven B on the agenda is the, um, RFP award for Kataba Park Engineering, city manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, after advertising for design and engineering services for Kataba Park through an RFP process, uh, we received proposals from eight different firms. Uh, after scoring those proposals, uh, we interviewed the top three. Um, all three finalists did an excellent job, uh, but Campco Engineering really conveyed their understanding of the site and the project in its entirety. Uh, based on the interviews and presentations, we have selected Campco Engineering to do the design and engineering work necessary for Kataba Park. Um, they have provided, um, not to exceed cost on the, uh, phase one master plan, um, as well as, um, which would include, uh, cost estimates, um, for, uh, the actual build out of the park. And we would ask for council's favorable approval of, uh, Campco Engineering at this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to award design and engineering contract to Campco Engineering in the amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars with funding coming from the Kataba Park Reserve Fund.
I have a motion by Jennifer Stalford, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Landmark Larson, any council discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven C is tabled. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report, Charlie. It's all you. It's all you, big guy. Nice.
Uh, very briefly, um.
One second, Charlie. Scott, would you do me a favor, open that door? It's an open meeting, it shouldn't be closed.
Conversion to our new accounting software is almost complete. Next round of utility bills, which will be T code one customers, uh, will be with the new system. Um, we're including an insert to alert customers. All customers are now going to have a new account number. Please take note of it on whenever you, uh, if you do your banking online, you do your bill pay online, make sure you go in, change your account number, um, if you use our online bill pay, uh, which is brand new and approved. Make sure you note that what that new account number is. Uh, we also will have a new, uh, eight-hundred number, uh, where you can call in and pay by phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, uh, it's an automated number that goes directly, um, in with our banking system. So, uh, we're very excited to finally have this, uh, to this point. Um, a lot of conversion that we've been having to do, but really excited about getting QS one up and launched.
Can you still enter your phone number in as your account number on the online bill pay?
No. No, sir, sorry.
One more number to remember. One more number to remember.
Just as a reminder to council, Hometown Legislative Action Day is February 4th. I think Katie Paulson has been communicating with you guys about that. Your statement of economic interest forms, mine and Bob Barkins as well, due by March 30th by noon, please make a note, March 30th at noon, your economic interest forms have to be submitted. Curbside collection of Christmas trees are gonna continue to the end of this month. After that, trees will need to be cut into parts no longer than four feet in length and four inches in diameter. As a note, we do not pick up artificial trees, and please undecorate the trees before you put them out at the curb. Sorry. Fire department has received their safety grant this year, and they were able to purchase infrared cameras. So really excited about that. And they're, they're getting their, their stuff in very quickly this year, so that's all I've got for you tonight.
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, I have a question regarding, when we were talking about communication methods, and I know that you've been looking into the robo calls. What kind of progress has been made? How soon will we?
They are working on getting it implemented now. We've already, we found somebody and negotiated excellent terms with them, and Tim Gillette and our IT folks are working on setting up the appropriate outgoing phone lines that are necessary. They're working with Comporium on that. Once they get that, we install the hardware, we're ready to go. But of course, it's only as good as the information we have. So if we don't have a phone number for you, those that are at home, get us, get us your correct contact information. If we don't have the right phone number, we can't reach you with the robo call.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the deer population survey. Has that already been performed? I understood it was gonna be done this month.
It is, I don't know that it has been done yet. I actually think it's supposed to start off, it's the first or second week of February, I thought, but I'll double check with our operations director on that and can get you a note.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions for Charlie? Public comments? Are there any public comments?
Yes.
I didn't want to take everybody else's time with this, but thank you for hearing me. I think you guys know him, Scott Shirley.
Would you hit the buzzer there, Charlie, for me? Thank you.
And ladies, forgive me. I just said guys. Welcome, police chief, glad to have you in our community. If you haven't already, you'll love it here. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up as a suggestion. The exit strategy during the early mornings during normal early morning business travel out of Tiga Key Drive, as many of you have probably witnessed, is extremely congested, and at times does become unsafe for buses to enter traffic onto Tiga Key Drive, as well as many of us going to work. In addition to that, that's the important piece, secondary piece is, is the nuisance piece of an excessively long wait in line on many of the streets that enter into Tiga Key Drive. As a suggestion to that, during normal business hours, business morning travel, it may be an appropriate suggestion to have the right lane for right turn only, up to the point where the right lane, right turn lane begins for the new Tiga Key Elementary School. I've seen many times those buses really struggling to get out and, and long lines of traffic being held up from those buses trying to get out into traffic as well. So if entering Tiga Key Drive, a swift movement to the left when it's safe to get into the left lane, and to use the right lane for right turn only during those early morning hours, perhaps I might suggest 6:00 AM to 8:30, or 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, something like that, just a suggestion there. Also, one other suggestion that, please, someone direct me in the right direction, but I'm working with a young, young fellow, neighbor of mine, who many of you probably know, who is working on his Eagle Scout project. One thought that I had to present to him that might be a suggestion for this group tonight, might be somewhat of a town watch for the water and the Tiga Key waterways. I'd be glad to take the reins to look into those possibilities and the communication channels that might go with that, the sign up that would be required for folks on the weekends and during the week to take part of watching that, watching boat registrations, unsafe behavior, reporting such things to the Tiga Key Police, maybe via marine radio. So if that's with your permission, I'd love to speak with whoever you might direct me to have that conversation, if you think it's appropriate.
Scott, I'm gonna ask you to have a conversation with Charlie, and he'll direct you to the proper person within City Hall who can work on that, if that's something that we can do. I'm sure he'll get the police chief involved as far as that kind of a question, but my suggestion is to talk to Charlie.
There's so much support from the community this evening that I'm sure we could tap into that resource, and I'm sure that they would respond appropriately if that sounds like something that's worth pursuing. So I'd be glad to speak with you at another time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Charlie, I know we had talked about the traffic issues there, and regarding what he was just mentioning, that there will be a traffic light going up at Shoreline. Is that still unscheduled to be done within about six months?
Probably within the next month and a half.
Okay, all right, great.
Item number 10 on the agenda, council comments. Ron, would you like to start us?
I got, I meant to ask a question, I've got another question for Charlie. I'm told that we still have a golf committee that meets, and I know a couple of guys that are on the committee, I don't mean the MGA, Men's Golf Association, but golf committee, and they meet with Pinnacle.
Yes, sir.
Invite them.
They, they meet with Pinnacle. I think, it used to be monthly, I think they're on a quarterly or semi-quarterly basis, but yeah, it is with the principles of Pinnacle. Yeah, it's feedback based. Here's what we're seeing around the course, here's what we'd like, here are complaints we hear, that type thing.
My question, my question is, is that committee, I understand, has been the same committee since the former mayor was in C?
It is the committee that I sit on, and it is a committee that rotates, it doesn't rotate, when someone drops off, they get a new member. It is not a, it is not a committee sanctioned by an ordinance of the city.
But they're dealing with an entity that we contract to operate the city facility.
You want to create an ordinance for the committee? We can create an ordinance for the committee.
I think, basically, I don't, I thought, I thought, I thought you did away with it, to be honest with you.
No, sir.
It came back to me again. But yes, I think there should be parameters on any kind of committee we have that's just dealing with our, we're dealing with Pinnacle, you know, just like we had one at the swim club, dealing with the.
I can tell you that Pinnacle does contact me generally after the meetings to let me know what concerns that committee brought to their attention, but as far as that committee really have, taking action over things, to my knowledge, they're not, but.
My understanding, their voice in Pinnacle gives them the respect to listen to what they have to say. As far as I'm concerned, Pinnacle's our, I know, they operate our largest investment that we should decide here on that committee. It not, it should not just be a committee, just committee. Like I said, I, I thought you did away with it when Bob formed it before.
Can I discuss it with you?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. We can leave it at that. Ron, you have any other comments?
No, I'm too frustrated to have.
Chris? I'm not frustrated, I have no comments.
Good.
I could see you.
Dottie?
No comments.
Jen?
Um, beautification committee asked that I mention that they met last week, and they will not be having formal workdays this, during the next month because of the weather fluctuating. And so if you're interested in volunteering in the gardens, living mall gardens, you can contact Patty Martin or Michelle McGuire through the city website, and they'll let you know what kind of tasks you can complete on your own and just report your hours.
Thank you, Jen. I've had a couple of people ask me about Tiga Key having their own zip code. 29708 is a Fort Mill zip code, people would like their own zip code for Tiga Key. Contacted Mick Mulvaney's office, since he worked on it at Indianland when he was a representative there, about the possibility of us having our own zip code. The response has come back from the United States Postal Service, and, and the reason why is that people are calling up utilities such as Comporium or Duke and saying they live at zip code number 29708, and they're saying, well, that's Fort Mill, we don't have that address in Fort Mill, because it's, it's showing up as Fort Mill, it's not showing up as Tiga Key. So, you know, 1234 Molokai in Tiga Key doesn't show up on Duke Energy or Comporium's computer system because the zip code doesn't match the city. So I, I've spoken to Mick Mulvaney's office, and their response is that as far as the United States Postal Service is concerned, if you're not having issues getting your postal delivery, they're not giving us our own zip code. So suggestion, if you are having issues, please let us know the issues that you're having, and we'll present them to the appropriate people about us potentially getting our own zip code.
Thank you for working on it. Mayor Hamilton worked on that for years, and we never could get that.
Well, that's, that's the reason that I got, and that's the letter I got from the